Welcome, everybody. Happy Thursday. Thank you all for being here. I am calling this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. We will start off with our flag salute. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. We will now do roll call. Trustee Chin.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Trin.
Here.
Trustee Proctor.
Here.
And I am also present. Moving on to approval of agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Brooks, for the motion and Trustee Chin for the second roll call vote. Trustee Chin?
Yes.
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Trin?
Yes.
Trustee Proctor?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes as well. Alrighty, public statements related to agenda items. So as a reminder, for study sessions, we are only taking public comment on the agenda. We also typically take public comment at a few different touchpoints. So I will open up for public comment now if anybody has anything. And there will be at least one other opportunity for public comment this evening. So if we could open up public comment, please, is there anyone in the audience first? Trustee Chin, if you could let me know if there's anyone in the audience?
No, the audience members are shaking their head. Thank you.
Great, okay. And then we'll take public comment online.
Yes, just one moment. Thank you, President Watkins. Good evening. I'll be calling on speakers during public comment in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise your hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. And you will hear a tone when your time begins, when halftime is expired. And once time is expired, we'll move to the next speaker. We have one speaker, Randy Painter. Just a moment. Okay, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. So I just wanted to speak to the topic of actually the opportunity for making public comments within the board study sessions themselves. When it was under consideration for changing the format of board meetings to having board meetings once a month and study sessions approximately once a month, there was concern raised about the opportunity for for the public to weigh in during the study sessions. So and for public members just to be able to weigh in. In the last several study sessions, there has only been the, first of all, the initial opportunity at the beginning of the meeting before there's any content presented. And then one opportunity after everything has been presented. And that's just really not in the spirit of what was discussed back when this was being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wait just another moment, but I don't see any other hands raised.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment for now and turn it over to Nancy. Diego, who might turn it over to?
Nancy.
Hi, hi, everybody. I am so excited to be here. And we are going to, we actually did a dress rehearsal before this. So we're gonna present a slide deck to you. But we also have a report that will kind of reference every now and then. So if you're at home, like we'll say page numbers, those in the boardroom. We just want to make sure that we don't like read from the report. So the function of the slide, I guess, kind of give you like touch points as Trustee Watkins was saying as we're going through. So I'm going to share my slide deck. Hang on one second. Yeah, hey. Can everyone see it? Can you give me just like a thumbs up? You can see it? Yes, okay. Perfect. So thank you so much for giving us an opportunity tonight to share some really good work that's been going on for the past eight months. So we're here to talk about the recommendations from the cultural responsive curriculum and practices task force. But we like to call ourselves the CRCP task force. So if you hear that, we're referencing sort of the title of our of our group. We're going to start with a land acknowledgement. So I want to invite Zoya to do that.
Okay. We acknowledge that our lands are located on the ancestral homeland of the Aloni peoples and that as the original stewards of this land, the Aloni understood the interconnectedness of all things and maintained harmony with nature for millennia. Indigenous communities have lived and moved in through this place over hundreds of generations. And indigenous people from many nations live and work in this region today. Please join us in acknowledging and honoring their ancestors, their elders, and their communities.
Thank you so much, Zoya. So as you know, anything in the realm of cultural responsiveness, you don't do it alone. So I had an immense group of people that came together to help us write the report, to come up with recommendations. But tonight, we have some special guests with us. I'll introduce myself and I'll pass the baton to other presenters. So I'm gonna call in our first person, which is Charlotte. And then we're gonna kind of go around and have each person say kind of their name and their role. And maybe, you know, why they joined the task force.
Me?
Yes, you're first.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Chang. I'm a parent of a four-year-old daughter. I'm the school site council chair at Sunny Bray Elementary. In fact, I live across the street from them. I also have over 20 years of curriculum development experience. And I've actually worked at other schools across the district here as well. Peter, you wanna go next?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Limada, and I'm a teacher on special assignment and currently assigned to Baywood and Sunny Bray. And yeah, I joined the task force. I could not pass up on the opportunity to do meaningful work in ensuring that our students, we know, get equitable treatment and indeed just to making sure that we're looking out and being intentional about making sure that we bring in all the, we cover all the needs for them. Rose, do you want to go next?
Sure. Can you hear me all? Okay. Hear me? Thanks. Okay. Why I joined the task force? Well, I feel that it was quite a destined to be, so to speak, because it lines very much with my own personal views of how we want the future to look, especially for my children. So that's why I'm mostly involved with this report here.
And Shannon was also part of our planning team to put this together. And she unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but we love her and we appreciate her and wanted to give her a shout out. So yeah, you're next.
I am Zoya Salome. I'm a first grade teacher at Beresford Elementary. And like all the other participants on CRCP, I couldn't pass up an opportunity to create a better world, a better educational system, and a system in which children who are marginalized, especially Black, Indigenous, and Latinx children, where we can uplift uplift their voices and equalize and include in all ways their voices. Thank you.
And then our final sort of presenter is Dr. Orlando Smith.
Good evening, Superintendent Diego Garcia. And to the board, it's been an honor to work with this group. I'm not going to go into my background. It's too extensive, but I retired just recently, four years ago, as superintendent from New Haven Unified. But it's been an honor to work with this group. I've facilitated many task forces and strategic plan, planning meetings. And this is one of the best, if not the best, most passionate, compassionate, dedicated, deep thinkers who really rolled up their sleeves and came up with what we think is a solid report. And the final thing I'll say now, we can talk about it later maybe, is they, I want to commend the district for going down this path. I looked at your strategic plan and just the courage to take this on in this, in these times is something that you should really be commended for. And so with that, I'm going to hold my other thoughts and come back to Nancy.
Yes. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, I think. And we'll do a little rewind. So hi, everybody. I see people coming in. Wanted to thank again the board trustees, our superintendent Diego Chilla, for allowing us a space to have this really important dialogue. And we really felt like that we need to center student voices and lift up their perspective. And what better way to do that than to bring their voice into this meeting? So this team actually created a video and we went to schools and we asked students the important question of what does it mean to be culturally responsive? And we really wanted you to hear them and also see their words. So we actually put subtitles. So Peter's gonna play the video for us. And we hope that that can be the anchor for the meeting, which is in thinking about the experiences of our students. And then we asked that you listen for a phrase or a statement, maybe even just look at a face and kind of hold that student as sort of the who in this in this dialogue about cultural responsiveness.
Culturally responsive means?
I can do all my best.
Culturally responsive means respecting that everyone has a different culture.
Lily, what does culturally responsive mean?
We learn about different people have different skin colors.
Hey, Kalina, what does culturally responsive mean?
That we all work together.
Culturally responsive means being in a community where everyone's respected.
Cultural responsibility means respecting everyone's identities.
Culturally responsive means that I'm proud of who I am and where I come from.
Culturally responsive means acknowledging other cultures. And that's how it's making it a better place in the world because we're not all from the same place.
Culturally responsive means respecting that everyone comes from a different background.
Culturally responsive means to include other cultures and understand that every culture is different.
Culturally responsive means respecting other people's cultures and learning more about their cultures.
Culturally responsive means where we come from.
Culturally responsive means to respect other people's genders and respect other people's respect other people's life.
What does culturally responsive mean?
Different is different. Just, just not good, not bad, just different is different.
Culturally responsive means?
I can read now. I am now. I am fast. I am fast time.
Thank you so much, Peter. Let me go back to our slide deck. Can everyone see that? Yeah? Give thumbs up? Okay. So we intentionally ended with the student saying culturally responsive means I can read. Because end of the day, it's about curriculum and practices. So that was to me that like really resonated when we went out and interviewed students that they said it's about having access to skills. I'm gonna give some overview and context to sort of how we came together. So in June of 2022, you all, the school board, along with our wonderful superintendent Diego Ochoa, adopted a five-year strategic plan. And that plan actually calls for openness, vulnerability, dialogue, and cross-cultural awareness. And we wanted to demonstrate our commitment by putting together a task force to review, create, and recommend district-wide equity strategies that propel us toward making this, these ideals a reality in our district. And one of the steps we did to achieve that is to come together as a task force. What we did for our first meeting is we actually defined what does diversity, equity, and inclusion mean? So if you're following along on the report, we have this like one pager for you on page six. And we feel that diversity is about the presence of things that are different from one another. And we do this in a variety of ways. We do this, so there's diversity with race, ethnicity, languages, religions, ages, disabilities, sexual orientation, socioeconomic statuses, and more. Equity involves understanding and giving each person what they need in order for them to achieve an equal footing in life. Equity is similar to equality, but equality only works if everyone starts in the same place, which is not always the case. And so what we want to do is we want to, we want to focus on helping people, in this case, our students, obtain what they need to get to a place where equality is possible. And inclusion, how we defined it was involving everyone and making sure that no one is excluded for reasons like their race, their religion, their gender, their sexual orientation, any disability they may have, anything that makes them different. As one was, as one student said, different is not good or bad, it's just different. We also wanted to share some data with you in the district. So I won't spend time here kind of going over all the numbers. But just for those at home, want to remind the audience that we are a district that has 52 English-only percent, English-only students, 23% English learners, 31% socioeconomic disadvantage, 15 students with special needs. We have 21 students, I'm sorry, 21 schools in our district. And we represent over 50 languages. And one of the things, and you're probably wondering, well, what, where did Orlando come from? Why is there, you know, why is there a facilitator? You know, what's going on? And actually, in the strategic plan, it calls for for us to have a facilitator. And so we kind of brought him in and he kind of helped, gave us a lot of really wonderful framing. And we, we met for six meetings, starting from August up until recently last month. And all the meetings were, it was a full-day meeting. For our representation, we had 32 task force members, and that includes Orlando and myself. We were able to recruit from, we had district staff, we had parents, we had teachers, teachers special assignment, classified staff. And we even had the assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction from the high school districts. And we really, we understand that we could have had broader representation, but we really want to do that in the planning phase and make sure that we include even more voices. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna shift us to our why. You saw a really wonderful video that gave us our who, what's about the kids. And we really want to give you sort of our compelling why. So I'm gonna kick it over to Charlotte.
Yeah, hi, everyone. So I think Nancy mentioned that we were brought on board because we've all seen that we all care about equity. And part of achieving equity is having cultural responsiveness, understanding not only about your own cultural identity, but the identity of many others. And what we noticed, I mean, I live across the street from Sunny Bray Elementary. I've actually worked at Autumn Bond at College Park, gone to the middle schools and things, and noticed that we have a room to grow when it comes to understanding the perspectives of not your own, just your own cultural identity, but the others. And if we don't do that work, if we work off of just limited perspectives, then the work that we do is very limited. And so the task force, why we were formed, was to explore how we can expand the cultural responsiveness of not just our students, but the staff who works with them. And we wanted to identify places that we could take actionable items, actionable steps towards these equity goals. And then Rose?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I agree with Charlotte. And I didn't, and I didn't know all that about Charlotte, but it was really nice to meet you more formally. Anywho, I agree, but mostly mainly also because personally of my children who attend Sunny Bray, they've attended every grade, both of my daughters and middle school at Burrell. And I became really passionate about inclusiveness and equity because of my children, but because I felt like if I wanted it for my children, then I had to want it for all of the other children too, you know? I mean, so that's where they come, that that kind of came in.
Thank you so much for sharing our why. We did this work and we needed sort of some parameters because when you start talking about recommendations, it can get pretty hairy. So I'm gonna have Dr. Smith talk about sort of how did we come together, 30 different people, different roles, different experiences, different schools? How can we talk about some of these challenges, some of these situations in a way that was coherent? So he's gonna explain sort of our guiding principles, this thing called sitness, which stands for situations in need of attention. And then the solution criteria we use, a framework in order to evaluate our many, many recommendations at the very beginning.
Thanks. Couple of quick things. First, I know Diego's last name is Ochoa, not Garcia. Garcia is a teacher who I used to have in my school. And I just got used to saying Diego Garcia, but I do know his name is Garcia. And Nancy's being too formal tonight. She called me Dr. Smith. She knows I prefer Orlando. Nancy, a former student of mine from San Jose State, and she's been very formal tonight, but we'll let that go. I'm having trouble pulling up my report here, but what, one of the things that guided the work of this group, what are the guiding principles that we want to live by as you move forward? And if we could put those up, then you'll see the ones that we came up with. In the meantime, the process was to spend a good deal of time with the group saying, what is it we're trying to solve? And a lot of people, you call them problem statements, you can call them whatever you like. I prefer the term situations. If you ever go to Jamaica, they always tell you, no problem, no problem, no problem. And they have a saying in Jamaica, there are no problems, only situations. And there's research that says that actually adopted that, and it's called situations in need of attention. But they're still problem statements. And so again, there's more research that says if you spend 65 to 75% of your time trying to identify what the problem is you're really trying to address, the solutions become clear faster. And so we spent the first three meetings really trying to define what was it we were trying to get at? What, what were the problems? What were the situations in San Mateo Foster City that caused someone to even say this was something that we needed, that needed to be looked at? Once we did that, we didn't go right to recommendations. We said, okay, we have all of these. Now, what are the criteria we're gonna judge by? We can have 100 different criteria, but only the recommendations that meet our criteria will be able, will be moved forward as recommendations. And so we spent a good deal of time saying, how are we going to judge the recommendations? People could come in and say, well, if you just give everybody $50,000, that'll be a solution, but it doesn't meet the criteria that we laid out. So it gets, it gets tossed out. So the guiding principles, the situations in need of, in need of attention, and the solution criteria led this group then to what they wanted to see as a result of this work. I would, I would say, before we started, we asked the group, what are your greatest hopes for this, this task force? And what are your fears? And the hopes were, they're in the report, you can see them. The hopes were very genuine. They were very heartfelt. But they, they struggled with that, which led to fears, that our fears, we're gonna go through this. Some of us have been through this many, many times. And that it's not going anywhere. It's just going to sit on a shelf like a lot of strategic plans and a lot of reports. And that was, that was one of their greatest fears. And so this group is now feeling, you've unleashed, you've empowered, let's call it, a group that's been empowered to continue to come back and say, where are we in this process? We invested an entire year. And we want some action in this arena. So you can see what the guiding principles are. You can see what the solution criteria are. And as we go through the process for the rest of the evening, you'll, you'll see, you'll see the sitness and the recommendations that came as a result of it. I wouldn't read the guiding principles for you, but I'm having trouble pulling them up. I'm not sufficiently technological that I could actually find them, so.
I think it's in the chat, there's a link to the report. I don't know.
I can, I can read them, Orlando. I have it. And if you're following along on our, our love letter to you, it's on page 21. So we have nine guiding principles. We will listen to the stories of those who have been marginalized, and we will not deny their lived experiences. Their stories are not subjective, their stories are true. Number two, we acknowledge that the organizations that exist at the end of this process might be different than the one we had when we started. And we accept that, that, we accept that as we started the journey. Number three, we believe we will successfully achieve equity through specific, realistic, and measurable goals. Number four, we believe we will work and advocate daily to interrupt and dismantle systemic racism. Number five, we recognize our policies and procedures have had negative effects on marginalized communities. Number five, we recognize our policies and procedures have had negative effects on marginalized communities. And we commit to being specific on which policies we'll be assisting which groups and how. Number six, we have hope and optimism for making positive change with a solution-oriented mindset. Number seven, we will create a space for humanity and openness for all of our students and staff. Number eight, we believe in our collective ability to make positive change by building one another up. And finally, we recognize that our organization includes everyone. However, we commit to entering this work on the pain, frustration, anger of the marginalized members of our organization, and not solely on the comfort of the majority. Um, for our solution criteria, we had four. So we had equity alignment, measurable clarity and sustainability, and those are on page twenty-two. So I want to get to like, kind of the, that was like the appetizer. I want to get to the main entrees. We have seven entrees for your night. So it's a seven-course, uh, dinner. I know people probably having dinner as they're listening to us. Um, but we really are committed to developing sustained implementation with ongoing monitoring. We want to create noticeable differences in our lives of the students and adults in the future. Um, so I'm gonna have Peter, um, kick off our recommendation number one. And we have seven, and then we would love to invite and have a dialogue um, with, with our trustees, with our wonderful superintendent, and have a conversation about any clarifying questions and anything that maybe we didn't, um, we didn't address in the, in our examples.
Thank you. And, uh, recommendation number one, um, sit now, or problem statement one, our classroom, our classrooms need culturally responsive and linguistically responsive practices in our curriculum. Number one, create a diversity, equity, and inclusion department that comprises of DEI teachers on assignment, minimum of eight, for implementation and coaching to develop cultural proficiency and best practices. And bullet points under that one, the DEI department promotes and ensures equality, social justice, and academic success for all SMFC students. The DEI department provides leadership in education. Number two, or bullet point two, the DEI department provides clear and regular compliance checks for all equity-related issues and in the development and enhancement of diversity and equity, so that each student can achieve their maximum potential in a positive and safe learning environment. Point three, the DEI department supports teachers, school faculty, students, and parents in reaching cultural proficiency through training, resources, and opportunities for constructive conversations. And bullet point four, the DEI department helps to facilitate opportunities for local commi- committees to share ideas and give feedback. Number two, to ensure sustainability, it is recommended the district form and empower two types of diversity and inclusion committees within the equity task force. One for strategy and one for implementation. Bullet point one, under that one, the strategy-focused group will provide direction and guidance on policies, programs, and issues related to systemic change. Bullet point two, the implementation-focused group will monitor on-the-ground initiatives, on-the-ground initiatives such as events, workshops, data analysis, and reports. Three, the primary responsibility of both groups is to collaborate together and drive progress toward established goals. And, uh, the last bullet point, both groups should be composed of diverse perspectives, including but not limited to school and district faculty, teachers, parents, and local community members.
Um, sit now, number two, um, our second problem statement is we need more anti-bias and anti-racist staff development that results in a culturally responsive school experience for our students. Um, basically, the bullet points underneath that are to increase consciousness through common language and understanding mindset throughout our district. Um, and especially for our teachers, an examination of biases uh, to interrupt and eliminate inequitable practices and create inclusive and just conditions for all of our students. Um, it require, it will require us to learn about our targeted groups of students, us being teachers, and share best practices that can inform system-wide improvements. Uh, we will discover and cultivate the unique, unique gifts, talents, interests, beauty, abundance, all of the above that every one of our beautiful students possess. Um, we will lead intentional equity-focused cross-collaboration projects. Our second, uh, uh, bullet point, um, not bullet point, but second point is, uh, to designate regular site-based staff meeting time to develop a culturally responsive plan for staff to receive culturally, uh, proficient, cultural proficiency and training in all departments and across grade level. That's crucial and, um, it's key. Thank you.
Recommendation three, sit now, problem statement three, we need to meet the academic needs of Latinx, Black, and historically underrepresented, represented students. Uh, one, incorporate English language development across all contents. Uh, two, explore alternative formative assessments that are asset-based and not norm-referenced. Three, explore the over-representation of Black and Latinx students in special education. Four, designate district staff who oversee the CCEIS, Comprehensive Coordinated Early Inter- intervening services, plan to be a member of the equity task force, and present quarterly findings toward goal completion. And five, review funds for knowledge research of Norma Gonzalez and Luis Moll, particularly as it relates to home visits and to, to determine possible application and effects on Latinx students, uh, student achievement in, in the San Mateo Foster City School District.
And recommendation number four, uh, problem statement, there are disproportionate numbers of Black and Latinx males referred for discipline issues. We need district-wide culturally responsive practices to examine and eliminate this disproportion. Number one, investigate the relationship of adultification and disciplinary actions towards Black and Latino students. Adultification is when notions of innocence and vulnerability are not afforded to certain, certain children. The term is usually applied to Black children that are viewed as older than they are. Number two, to promote and cultivate a culture that celebrates assets and strengths rather than deficit. Number three, make a concerted effort to address discipline dispro- disproportionality and discipline referral of Black and Latinx students. Confront implicit biases to help address disproportionate discipline referrals of Black and Latinx students. Number four, disproportionality should be treated as discrimination in the manner as discrimination in housing or labor. Thus, the cause is not behavioral and requires the leadership of the district as a whole to investigate implicit bias and provide professional development to remove the mindset that one group does not care, or the mindsets that promote the concept of othering.
Oh, Zoya, you're muted. It's okay. It happens, it's okay.
There we go. Thank you. Um, sit now, number five, um, our hiring practices need a standard framework for hiring a diverse teacher corps so that our Latinx, Latinx and Black students can see themselves in the teacher population. First, we want to create a diversity and equity and inclusion department, which is supported top-down and bottom-up. We want to prioritize the title when schools when hiring. Um, all things being equal, also prioritize the hiring recruitment of Black and Indigenous uh, and people of color educators who are culturally proficient. Um, teachers participate in the hiring panel after they've completed a DEI training. Um, the applicants should be asked to also teach a culturally responsive lesson. And last, involvement of, of a DEI department in the training of interview panelists, hiring process development, and the final selection of candidates. Um, sit now, number six, when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, our district operates on the by, on the basis of fear and complacency. We want to promote and cultivate a culture that recognizes and celebrates our students' assets and strengths rather than deficits. We want to provide, uh, principal, uh, admins support opportunities to convene and discuss equity dilemmas as related to DEI. We want to use an equity lens for instructional walkthroughs, create a rubric for instructional walkthroughs that align with equity goals in the strategic plan. Develop protocols for how to share feedback from administrators to, um, from administrator to teaching staff that is given in a transparent manner. We want to embrace vulnerability and a culture of humility. After all, isn't that what makes us human? And admit that we don't know, show courage in embracing new ideas and methods, and provide opportunities for reflection. We want to create an equity vision and a mission statement for the district that aligns with our equity goals in the strategic plan. And we want to encourage risk-taking among administrators by offering administrators a multi-year contract. Imagine having that same administrator for many years to create stabilities in our schools. Um, thank you.
Uh, number seven, uh, our district needs a shared and aligned vision that reflects and affirms our values when it comes to cultural proficiency. We cannot do this alone, we have to do it together, right? Uh, so let's create guiding principles and shared vision for culturally responsive practices that include all stakeholders. And let's create clear and distinct values around equity, diversity, and inclusion. Develop short and long-term equity strategies. It can't be just something that happens once, right? It has to be long-term. We need assigned diversity, equity, and inclusion department staff to implement equity goals in the strategic plan. This should not be the job of a teacher or someone who already has a full-time role. This work is a full-time role, right? Multiple people's full-time roles. And let's create an equity vision and mission statement for the district that aligns with our equity goals in the strategic plan that we've already approved.
Thank you so much for hearing our presenters and our, our, our members of our task force. Uh, again, we, we come to you humble and we, we know that we don't know everything, and we know that we sort of downloaded the brain and the intentions of thirty people, um, but we recognize that we don't speak for everybody. So we would love to have dialogue and take questions and provide clarification at this time. Um, and I'm not sure, yes.
I don't know, go ahead.
No, no, I, and I, I wasn't sure if you were able to hear the audio of the kids. I don't know if you want us to play it again. I think I got, so we're good? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I heard it from the sound. If somebody's been here, please speak up. But, um, thank you all so much for the presentation um, and for all of the work that you've put into this. Um, so we'll follow kind of same process as normal. Um, board clarifying questions. So again, just questions to start, and then we'll open up for public comment again, and then we can have a board discussion. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Regarding the retention of the task force who will be either assigned or hired into these positions permanently, has there been a, um, recommendation, uh, of, about how many, um, assigned to different schools, uh, or a certain amount of group, or a certain group that's assigned to many schools, or are they assigned to individual schools?
I think the only staffing that we called out explicitly was the, the TOSAs that would be helping in uplifting this work. And we came up with eight because we have four, um, middle schools. And I think we talked about assigning two TOSAs per, um, middle school strand. So the way our district is broken up, we're broken up by complexes. So all the schools are being to Burrell, all the schools are being to Abbott. So that middle school kind of anchors the, the other elementary schools. They would, they would all share, um, two TOSAs.
Thank you. Are there other board clarifying questions?
So, question, um, on recommendation number three, um, number five, review funds of knowledge research of Norma Gomez and Luis Moll. Is that a, um, should we elaborate a little bit on that one?
Norma Gonzalez and Luis Moll are researchers who have done extensive work on the Latino family and Latino, uh, what, what, in places where they've had success with Latino student achievement. And their work kind of gets unseen. It's not well-known, but they, they have had tremendous, they have tremendous respect in the field. And they've had, they've had lots of success with people who draw on their research. And so funds of knowledge is the process that they advocate for using, uh, for people to consider using. You don't have to adopt the whole thing. But just it's the way to get over some of the negative thoughts that people have when they say, who cares about their kids in education and who doesn't care about their kids' education? And that certain people, certain ethnicities value education more than other people. And once you get to know a family and what that family values, you treat that family differently. And so that's what, that's what it is. It's called funds of knowledge. And they are two very, uh, well-respected scholars.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question about one of the guiding principles, um. Number three, discussing achieving equity through specific, realistic, and measurable goals. Can we talk a little bit about what some of those goals might be and how we might measure the, you know, our progress towards those goals?
So the, the strategic plan gives sort of a blueprint for our equity commitments. So our, our our hope is that, um, in the formation of the, you know, this DEI department or providing staffing, that there would be a, a dedicated group of people who are looking, or staff who are looking at the strategic plan and saying, okay, year one, this is what we've committed to. Um, and these are the goals. These are the quarterly goals. These are the things that we're gonna show, right? These are the artifacts. So this is evidence that it's not just a beautiful document that we put together. We actually live and breathe the, the things that we've laid out, um, as a district.
Back to that, I swore I wasn't gonna talk much tonight. I'm just the consultant to the group. However, whoever worked with you on your strategic plan did a marvelous job. Your strategic plan is very well done. This task, year one of the strategic plan was to create the task force. Year two is the planning phase. And so the, it wasn't the charge of the task force to resolve and solve the problems. It was, here's the identification of what we're up against. Now you want to start planning. And as, I think it was Charlotte who said, this is a long-term process. If, if, if San Mateo Foster City thinks that this is gonna be something that's done on the quick, and it's a two or three years, and now we're onto something else, you'll be back here in two or three years. And so this has to be seen as a long-term evolving process and a long-term commitment that will, can be sustained. process and a long-term commitment that will, can be sustained and, and withstand personnel changes.
Any other board clarifying questions? I have my typical questions that are also comments, so I'll save them.
I have a question. Um, I'm just not quite grasping what it is that a diversity, equity, inclusion department of eight would do all the time. And so I'm, I'm not, I'm just wondering if you can explain a little bit about like the roles. You said there's two per middle school. What, what are they doing all day, every day? And what are, I guess, going back to trustee Trin's comments, like, how do we know whether it's working and it's a good use of time, fun, everything?
That's a fair question. So the, the concept of a TOSA isn't new in our district, right? We have TOSSAs who work on math. Peter's a math TOSA. We have TOSSAs in the language and literacy. And when you go into our strategic plan, we have equity goals. We have wellness goals. So for example, we, we just hire an LGBT TOSA to kind of address some of the goals in there. And what we feel, and I please speak up anyone else, only presenter, is what we're, what we landed on was this idea of, well, who owns this work? Because if, if the, if, if everybody owns the work, then no one owns the work. And so this year, there's been a lot of places that, you know, I've been able to shadow students. I've been able to collaborate and my colleagues have been wonderful about providing resources and supporting schools. But we wanted to, again, going back to the guiding principle number three, well, we need to create goals and it needs to be identifiable. Charlotte, you have your hand up. Do you want to go ahead?
Right. I would recommend going back to sit in our problem statement one because it outlines pretty much in detail what we are planning for this department. And the whole idea is that we are, we want to take the burden away from our classroom teachers, our staff and faculty. So these are the people who are going to help figure out how to integrate culturally responsive curriculum or practices. Help teachers train up, right? Figure out what, what, what is the implementation? Help them unify what that curriculum could look like and could be and sustain it. So those are multiple things that I already can tell, like from being in the classroom, is a full-time job, like multiple people's full-time jobs. And that second statement is so important. We talked about really wanting to include all the stakeholders. And Nancy is full-time and we tried it. We were wrangling people about 30 plus, right? We need more people so that we can get more voices in the room. So that when we are checking in on accountability, on the work that we're dying, doing, that all the voices get to give that feedback and that we can incorporate it as well. So to me, that is telling us that it is not a one-person job. It is not a two-person job. It is a multi-person job because it's, it's going to require a lot of work. Hope that answers the question.
After that, we treat equity as something separate from the main meal. It's like, let's do professional development for English. Let's do professional development for reading. And then we say, well, we're going to have an equity workshop. And now let's get back to the serious business of education. And that has been, that has been a false practice. Equity needs to be woven through everything that happens in a school and in a district. And how that happens needs the support of people who can coach it and teach it on a, on a consistent basis. It can't be drive-by, one-shot, now let's get back to teaching reading. Let's get back to teaching math. There's equity in reading. There's equity in math. There's equity in science. There's equity in P E. There's equity in everything. And again, that is, that's been one of the shortcomings of education is we treat it as an add-on rather than as a part of the main meal.
Zoya and Peter, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Furthermore, like, as it, as it is the main meal, it's also different. It's not different. It's the same concepts and same ideas, but you're going to approach it developmentally differently in younger grades than you might approach it in the older grades. And so we need people with breadth and with, to, to reach all the different levels of students that, that and staff that we need to reach. And we, we need personnel to do that, to, to shift mindsets. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Yeah. And just to add on to that, to kind of piggybacking what you just said, Zoya, I think I found that in my role, for example, as a math tosser, we've provided, and Zoya, you could speak to this since you're in the classroom, but I found that we've created a bridge between the district office and, and the classroom and people knowing who do I go to if I need help on A, B, C, D? Who do I go to if I have recommendations? And so being able to have those in real time or as close to real time as you can with two people serving multiple schools. So being able to have that bridge, I've seen, you know, people will message us, people will, will send us emails and ways of reaching out. And we're able to carry that almost immediately or as quickly as we can to bring it back to the district and say, well, this is what is happening on the ground. These are recommendations that we're getting. So I think in having extra personnel as well out there, speaking from experience, my own experience as a math passer, I get to see that happening as well. And I think that will allow, because not every time will somebody be able to reach the director of equity, of diversity and equity and inclusion. But if they have a colleague, somebody that they can reach out to almost immediately, it, it, it helps breach that. So yeah, creating that bridge is so important.
Yeah. And teachers need other teachers or TOSSAs or whoever to talk to. We're, we're humans. We need to bounce ideas off of our cell, off of each other. Furthermore, we need someone to help us to either be held accountable or to say, hey, great job. We, 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 just as much as the children need that positive reinforcement in areas that are going to keep us going or say, hey, listen, you know, let's rethink that. But we need to do that in a, through a social construct and through TOSSAs. I, I found in my career that one of the best ways to, to grow and to shift mindsets.
Rose, I see your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to mention, well, the really quick that, that the intent behind someone working in that, in that department would be intentionally equity, have equity as, as opposed to perhaps some other main, you know, reasons for action.
There any other board clarifying questions? We will open up public comment and then we'll have opportunity for more discussion. So trustee Chin, anyone in the live audience?
Anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment?
Okay. If we can open up public comment on Zoom, please.
Yes. Okay. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. We have one speaker, Randy Painter. Okay, please go ahead.
Hi. Good evening again. Thank you to this team and group for this great presentation for a very important topic. For, there was one question that I had. I was hoping that if, if you can, if you could explain a little bit more about it. But it was for the Sitna problem statement three. And it was for item number three within that specifically, or sorry, for item number two. For explore alternative formative assessments that are asset-based and not norm-referenced. And I'm really curious about this. So of course, I'm all about an, an asset-based approach to teaching and asset-based approach to education. I'm wondering how, how formative assessments are done that are asset-based and what the utility of that could be. And, and with the summative assessments, so are those going to be norm-referenced? Are you doing away with the summative assessments? And why, why do assessments that are, I, yeah, what? How, how can, I, I'm not a teacher, obviously. But how can assessments be informative to tell where a student is on their academic trajectory and referencing it back to themselves? Right? When it's not normed. Anyway, I'm hoping that, that one of these experts can comment on that and I really appreciate this presentation.
I don't, is this, is this the time to respond?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll, we'll see if there's any other public comment and then turn it back over to the board for discussion and at that time potentially ask for a response. Thank you. Any other public comment on Zoom?
President Watkins, there are no other speakers.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. We are opening it up for board discussion. And yes, I think if now you want to kind of respond to that, sorry, we're just trying to follow the process. If we respond after every public comment, if now you want to respond to that, that'd be great.
Someone else wants to take that one, feel free. I do think we have to recognize that there is a cultural layer to assessment. And that layer, I'll, I'll do it as simply as I can. If you take a Spanish speaker who only speaks Spanish and you assess them in English, a language they don't understand, they're not going to do very well. But you test those same Spanish speakers in Spanish. And again, I don't make this up. You can look at the research for yourself and they achieve at a high level. In fact, many of them out-achieve, they achieve higher than the English-only counterparts. And so looking for alternative ways to assess students, it doesn't always have to be in their natural language. However, formative assessments can be done just walking through a room and assessing. There are multiple ways to assess. It doesn't always have to be pencil and paper or let's go up and make a speech. There are ways to assess in time. And that's, that's how you get good feedback. You can assess where a child is every day when they walk out of your room. There are practices that you can create. And so exploring those where, so that we're not just using pencil and paper or let's stand up and make an oral presentation. But what are the multitude of ways to assess that we don't take advantage of? That would also give us a better understanding of where a child is and what a child needs.
Great. Thank you so much. Now opening it up for board discussions, so comments, follow-up questions, et cetera.
I have a follow-up question for actually our superintendent, as I'm not familiar with assessments. Are there requirements that we conduct assessments in English?
So in the whole span of assessments that we administer, as you know, we have schools that offer dual language programs. So there are some schools where students are assessed in multiple languages by nature of the program that they're in. There are examples of assessments that the state of California does permit the school district to administer a Spanish version of an assessment. Those aren't always accessible on the more high-stakes assessments. Those tend to fall into the category of being administered in English. So it is sort of a balance of different assessments at different grade levels. I'd certainly like to be able to put together a really good summary that shows depending on the age of the student, the subject matter, what examples exist of ones that can be administered in the home language and others that can't. By requirement, there are many, most in fact, that do require the administration. Those are the high stakes, the external tests. Internal tests are different. We, as a school district, can make decisions of what types of internal assessments to administer and how to administer them. As an educator, I'm always seeking to understand what kids know and what kids can apply. And if I have students who are newcomers to this country and I want to know if they understand the math I'm trying to teach them, but they've been here for three months, I'm going to give it to them if I can in their home language because I want to know if they have the mastery of the math, not the English. So, you know, it just kind of depends on the different exam that might be out there in terms of us making a decision on how to administer that assessment.
Were comments? I can jump in if no one's going to talk. Oh, go ahead.
I guess a follow-up question to trustee Trin is are teachers who are administering, administering the test, do we find that they are accessing these tests or allowing the kids to take them in languages they feel would give them a better understanding of where they are?
I would definitely, trustee Brooks, want to bring in our Ed Services Department, provide the board an update on this, just so that I can give the best, most accurate answer possible. I know that we have some very experienced teachers out there and principals who have a real facility with the kind of assessments that we give. So my instinct is to, you know, express confidence that our staff really understands what flexibility exists. But I want to be able to give that to you in a format that's comprehensive. And I think, you know, in a matter of a couple of days, we could pull something together.
If it's okay if I hop in, to just pull back to the Sitna three, I want to emphasize that we use the word explore because we're not defining using this proposal, but like superintendent Cho is saying, we're putting that as an objective of finding the right people to put into the room to decide what could be, what could these assessments look like, who could administer it? And that is part of the work that we want to move forward on.
Yeah, I think we sometimes see the word assessments and we think it's a test. The kid gets a piece of paper, they fill something out. But a lot of teachers give informal, informal assessments or they do what's called a check for understanding. So your kids might come home and say, hey, my teacher had me fill out an exit ticket. So I, as a teacher, might read the exit ticket and figure out, did the learning objectives get met? Could the majority of my students, right, re-explain their learning in their own words so that I have a measure? So the next day I'm not moving on to chapter two because I saw some evidence that chapter one was, was mastered. So we're not, we're not saying, right? Give a test and like, you know, do this and this. We, we just want to call attention to the use of formative assessments and exploring the possibilities. And then I think the other piece with norm-referenced, I'll give an example as a mother. When I would take my kids to their wellness checks when they're babies, if you compared my kids' height and weight to what's normal, like what's norm-referenced, they did, it was not looking. um, they did, it was not looking good, right? Because, you know, I'm petite. I'm, if you can't tell, I'm Asian. So my kids are they're, they're high in their weight, are not going to be like everybody else in the United States. So we had to kind of do our own research, right? Our own measures to figure out what is a normal weight, right, for my children. Um, same thing with other measures, right? Head size. Um, because, you know, my daughter, by all definition, you know, was not getting to where she needed to be in terms of height. But I'm really short, so I knew that, right? So, but I so that's another example, like assessments are not just something that you get in, in school. We get them in other places like the pediatric, you know, going with your pediatrician, um, and providing people with alternative assessments, other ways of thinking about data, um, and really help inform what they do with that data.
Thank you. Um, I can kick off with, with a couple um thoughts and, and comments. I just want to first say um just thank you to everyone here presenting and, and thank you to everyone that participated in this group. Um, it's, it's very clear that there was a lot of thoughtful and intentional conversation that occurred and really robust recommendations um that emerged from those conversations and just a real diverse set of individuals that took part in this. Um, and so I'm just really grateful to, you know, everyone on this list that's a part of the task force and those of you taking additional time today to share the work with us. So thank you. Um, I have like two kind of I guess thoughts, um, comments. So one is just around this idea that so I think as we think about kind of dedicated resources to this work, like I'm all on board and in support of that, there's a piece around like putting your money where your mouth is and saying like, if we're not actually investing in something, if it's like a side thing, then it will always be a side thing. And um, so like actually putting weight and resources behind these initiatives like have to happen if it's actually something that we value. Um, the kind of secondary piece to that is I feel like my one concern, and this, this just leads to maybe, is maybe a question around how you all are thinking about alignment and um strategy. If diversity kind of like happens over here and it's like, oh, that's like, that lives in like the D E I work over here in this department. It doesn't actually live in student services and in ed services and in, you know, finance and in H R. Like I have questions around how you all are thinking about the integration between this work up and all of the other departments. Um, because I think that that like has to happen when, and as you talk about TOSSAs, and I'm thinking about all the other TOSSAs we have, and I know that we've done that by um complex as well, like what does that look like for TOSSAs to work with each other in tandem on some of these pieces? So again, it's not like you have your math TOSSAs and your diversity TOSSAs. And so math just happens here and diversity happens here, like I'm just thinking about how we break down those silos, which I think is really hard, right? People don't have time, like there's, there's a lot of reasons why with all the best intentions, silos happen are inevitable. Um, in organizations, particular, I mean, particularly as they get larger. Um, so that's like one comment slash question, which I would like love to hear thoughts on, but it, it filters into kind of a second piece, which is around it's making me, some of the recommendations raise questions for me about like where they live. Um, so we have like a lot of different task forces. And we have like the phase two of the equity task force and the equity work. And so some of the recommendations, like I see a very clear link between culturally responsive teaching and learning specifically. And some of them, such as equity, mission and vision, like, does that live here or does that live broader? Even just like the D E I TOSSAs, like, does that live here or does it live more broadly? And it maybe the distinction is irrelevant. Um, but I do just wonder as like we start to break down some of these pieces and also want to maintain like this overarching umbrella around equity and what it means in our district. Um, how we talk about that in a way that's like cohesive and strategic and aligned and de-siloed. Um, has clear ownership, like who really owns what? What does that mean for the goals? What does that mean for tracking? What does that mean for resourcing? So um, those are like kind of the things that I'm like thinking about and sitting with at least initially. Uh, some of them you might have answered too and thoughts on, some you might not. Opening it up though, if anybody has any comments on that.
Definitely have some, but I'll let somebody else answer first. All right, hearing none. If this is going to be successful in your district, it has to touch every single person who works in your district. There has to be a requirement and an understanding. It has to affect eight, and I I'm always kind of hesitant to tell what we did as if when I was superintendent, we had a, you know, a magic formula. And some things we worked, some things worked and some things didn't. But when we did professional development, our classified people were intentionally a part of that. It wasn't just what happens in the classroom. One of the things that we did to change the mindset uh of our district was, and I've shared this with the task force, we changed people's name badges. So it would say Orlando Smith. And instead of saying superintendent, it said educator. And every person in the district name badge said educator. So if you were a bus driver, you were the kitchen staff, you were a custodian, you had to see yourself as an educator. That therefore you were required to participate in the things that educators do, because you, whether you're reading to a kid on the bus, oh, I would tell people every time you write a check, you're not just writing a check to pay a bill. That check is to support the students in the school. So that makes you an educator when you write a check. And we would, that has to be, that's a consistent message. And so when you say, where does it live? It has to live throughout your entire district. And, and I don't say this, I don't say this in any sort of self-aggrandizing form. That's just not my style. But I, I, I was invited to a meeting at the White House. And when I told them how we included classified people in our professional development in order to transform the way people thought about education, at the break, I had so many people come up to me and ask, so many superintendents, how do you do that? And we just restructure our day. So if the secretary is going to be away and when we have a professional development on something, we reorder the day. We, she's going to be out of our office for two hours. And so who's going to take her responsibility? The, the campus monitor is not going to be at their post, so somebody has to do that. Your H R department, your fiscal people, when we walk through a school and we're, and we're doing equity walks through a school, it doesn't do any good if the only people doing it are the people who are credentialed. We take our fiscal people. So they know who they serve, the services for kids. And I don't want to get preachy, but it has to touch every single body. And you'd get, you'd run into things about, you know, union contracts and my hours this. So it's all in messaging and all of that. But it, I, I don't want to be too redundant. I'm, I'm just going to say this and stop. If it doesn't reside throughout the district, your classified people especially, you leave out a whole portion of the people who you need to make this happen. So that has, that really to me is, I'm glad you asked that question. And you can see, I feel strongly about it. It has to touch every single person in your district.
President Watkins, if I can chime in, more than a year ago, we spent months in this boardroom with a team of about thirty five because, you know, community members and constituents who represented, you know, very broad cross section of this school district community. And uh, the outcome of that process was the adoption of the strategic plan, which I think over the last year has been referenced almost universally by every um group that has convened to discuss the future of the district or um, the direction of the district. And the strategic plan has really accomplished what we wanted it to accomplish. It has set us in a very clear and powerful direction. And the recommendations that the board is being presented today are part of a process we planned for last year. What the next sixty days will allow us to do with the board's direction is to compile and reflect and analyze and come back to the school board with a time bound implementation for the many, many powerful recommendations that we see in this report. Under the um umbrella of the CINAS that are listed here, um, it's going to take a big effort to make the kind of progress we need to see in all of those areas. And we'll have to make some decisions about which CINAS and which actions within each CINA require our immediate attention and our um, our total focus for twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six. I think our um, our uh ed services department and student services department say, oh, we've heard Diego say, we're not going to do it all in one year, folks. We're going to take, we're going to really think about this and analyze. Um, and then we, with the board's direction, um, after this evening and, you know, giving the public an opportunity to see these recommendations and reflect on them. Um, give our, our team, a very talented team here at the district office that would include members of this committee, an opportunity to um engineer some time bound implementation strategies that we would then weave into the strategic plan for adoption um at the June regular school board meeting for this year and then set us on, on a path to, to system wide implementation over a four year period. So, um,
I think there are some other hands up to respond to that, if we can do that. And then I want to have a follow up question to that. I'm assuming Peter, Rose and Charlotte, is this all to respond to that or no?
Oh, oh, yes. May I respond to President Watkins' um comment questions? I'm still trying to hold on to you. There was a lot of comments, like you said, um, and the question um that I took from that and to answer was um, well, to answer, I think what the question was, was that and touching what our, our, our learned, Orlando was saying, that it equity, and I feel like not just in um, well, of course, the students is, is um, well, we all take part in the student, like as a, as a generation, as a, and a race, the human race, we all, as adults, we all take part in, in these, in, in a young person's uh future, um, you know, and, and so what our minds and our thoughts are thinking, if we're not thinking equity, you know, we're not going to produce equity. And so, um, you know, I just wanted to um throw that out there.
And um, thank you, President Watkins, for, for the question too. I was just thinking about it as you um, as you finished talking and it was um, one of the things to, and please pardon my circuitous answer on this, is I'm trying to draw also on um, an example of my former district and my former school that I worked at. And there was a time when um, I went to this school and so um, restorative justice had just been introduced and it was a title one school in Oakland. And we had so many issues. And I remember restorative justice, a restorative justice person being introduced at the time and um a lot of complaints were about how, what, what work are we doing? Why are we having circles when students are fighting? We need to have more robust um responses to this. And so it was, but I was fortunate enough to have had that person work with me in my classroom. And so I got to really have the benefit seeing how those conversations, those circles were really restoring the relationships in my classroom. And so um fast forward, eight years later, my principal was leaving and I remember we had a situation that happened at the playground where there was kind of a shoving um, the marsh that went on with two students. And I remember the entire school was talking about this. And it was like, did you hear what happened with Jordan and Alaya? Did you hear what happened here and there? And so I remember having this conversation with my principal and saying, do you remember where we've come from to get to this point where when one student has shoved another, it is then the talk of the school? And at that point, when this uh earlier, eight years back, we were talking about fistfights. And so just thinking and having that restorative person come in and not be ready, the person, it was the right measure, but maybe not at the right time. And so just thinking to like eight years later, now we're able to have these restorative circles. And so just thinking about the baby steps that may need to be taken. And so just thinking about this as well in terms of um, what do we need? What are the steps that we need to take as San Mateo Foster City to move us forward? And those being, you know, I, I'm thinking one, being creating visibility, creating that intentionality about what we're trying to do to move this work forward and also equipping teachers with the ability, the language, the, the skills to, to, to begin to integrate. How, how do we begin to integrate this into your classroom as a whole and not maybe just, oh, when the um, uh diversity TOSSA is coming to your classroom? And how do we begin to use that on a daily basis? And it will take training, it will take time. And then also um, we mentioned those checks and balances that we would have. So how do those come in? Having real time as well, formative assessments for our own work, but also the summative assessments and coming back and looking at our own work and saying, where are we? How have we measured up to this? And what should we change? What, what should we move forward? So that was just my um, my thought on that. Thank you.
And then I'll plus one everyone, everything that other people said. I will, I, I keep pointing back to our document because it's chock full of info and really want people to really like make it a meal, like look into all the details. We spend a lot of time. So look into CINA seven, President Watkins, because that is where we talk about, hey, we, we agree, we need a shared and aligned vision. So that is part of the work we're recommending is that we have these conversations that we do figure out how some of these um missions and objectives, it's not an or, it's an and, that that work is, is taking place in one task force and another task force, because it needs to be embedded throughout and that we need that communication so that we're consistent and we can make that progress that we want.
Yeah, thank you guys all for the, for the comments. Um, I part of me is like, you guys don't need to sell me on the thing. I'm already sold on the thing and the need for alignment and the need for this, like, you know, and the need for this to live everywhere. Like, I'm very, so I feel like maybe I wasn't like super clear in my comments because like I am sold um, on all of that. I think just to be like super tactical, I think um there's a piece around I, I think some of it is like in the built out, build out of the detail. And I actually think like in the document, because I have looked through it in detail. I think there's some maybe left to be like if you have thoughts about where these, so for example, like create an equity vision and mission statement, like given that it's coming from the culturally responsive curriculum and practices group, like it sounds like what you're saying is it doesn't mean it lives in the group. It means that we're making a recommendation that this is something that needs to happen. I do think making that clear would be helpful. Because I do think to, as we move forward, like I said, there's a lot of different committees, like being really clear around what goes where and what lives where and who owns what is important in order for it to live everywhere. And Nancy, as you said, like if everyone owns it, nobody owns it, right? And so like, I think I'm struggling a little bit to feel like some of these things feel very culturally responsive, like teaching, practice, curriculum. And some of them feel broader. And it can still be that it's a recommendation coming from this group, but then it like needs a place to live long term. And in my mind, that doesn't live in this committee or like with this group. And again, maybe that's not what you're saying, but I don't think that that's super clear. So I think making that clear would help. Um, and then I also just think like helping And then I also just think like helping to paint the picture around alignment. And again, maybe that's something that happens later, but I would argue then that that's a recommendation that then we need to have like that clear alignment between this work and the work that happens with ELA and the work that happens with math and like that that's super intentional. You know, I'm, I'm like a strategy kind of like to implementation person. So like that's where my mind is always going to go. And I'm struggling a little bit to like make those connections super clear. And again, it might be that like, just like where we are in the process. But I think the more that we're able, we're clearly able to articulate that, then yeah, then, then I will just like make for a smoother transition. So I will, I know I've taken up a lot of time, so I will stop talking and turn it over to my fellow trustees. So although if nobody does have something else to say, go ahead, Ken.
I'll just say that the two initial points that President Watkins made, I have very similar thoughts that initially came up. And so my comments, just structurally, to state this is I'm, I'm going to go through some of the recommendations and pull out some highlights. But the, so I'll start with sort of the number one, sit in the number one and the, the department. Say, my first initial reaction on the DEI department was, wow, you know, we're going to create this whole department with eight people and like, how are we going to do that and where's this going to live and everything else? And then my thought was, wait, is, is eight enough? You know, for everything that we're going to try and do and achieve, you know, the thought is it's going to take a lot and there's a lot to this. And so first I want to say, you know, I really appreciate the presentation and everyone's hard work on this. I think this is a really important topic and I am super in favor of it. I, I sort of jumped towards like the implementation and how it fits within the school district and where all the pieces are. And so I've sort of downlined a little bit of what President Watkins had said a little bit as well. And then I'll comment on what Superintendent Tosa said. So my thought is like, I'm really on board with the Tosa's. I, I think that we have done in the past couple of years since Superintendent Tosa has come on, is that in the past, we've had this sort of blanket category Tosa's. And a lot of times they would go to different schools and just do certain things. But in our last board meeting, we classified and reclassified three Tosa's and gave specific sort of direction and job classification to it. And I kind of feel like this is sort of the next step where maybe the next eight or so are going to be DEI sort of specialists in some ways, where we normally have, let's say fifty, sixty Tosa's in our district. As we sort of like riddle it down, there are going to be some Tosa's that are going to be specifically for certain topics. And, and so I see how this department is sort of going to be created and by complex. And I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that. I feel like, you know, we have historically come out and done, or maybe not we, but maybe the industry has said, oh, we want to do this initiative and this initiative and this initiative. And everything gets passed down from the board, the district, down to the teachers, where it just gets piled on and piled on. And the teachers all have like, how am I supposed to do this? You know, and so by providing Tosa's and the ability for having help, I think really will move us in the direction to making this successful. So I'm curious about how it's all the details, but I think, I, I know that this is just sort of the report of the task force. And I, so I will, I know the details are coming through the plan. Number two, same thing with President Watkins. I feel like when we talk about the Equity Task Force, we have the Sanctuary Task Force. And now we're going to have two different arms of the Equity Task Force working specifically on this. My initial thought is that we have just a bunch of different things and how is it all going to be weaved in? My feeling is like in two or three years, you know, we may have to take a step back and say like, all right, how does this all work? Because I feel like there's going to be different arms doing different things, but yet they're all going to be doing things that are very similar. And so I do have questions about that, but I figure that, again, it'll get worked out. Let me just skip through some of these. The adultification, I thought was really key. I don't know, there was this video that just came out. You know, we've all seen videos of, what was it? It was three or four years ago when there was another school district where a student was handcuffed in the office. And this was three or four years ago, there was, and that was very difficult to watch. I just saw a video locally of a, of a young child being handcuffed in a value fair mall down to south of us, which happened, I think today, which was really disheartening. And so I feel like that phrase adultification really stuck with me sort of because I feel like, you know, there is something that we need to do here and to look at our students as not adults. Going on, I, I definitely Title I schools, I, I think definitely promoting more and hiring more teachers that reflect our actual district is really important. I love this, this is sort of like a footnote, but it's, it's a good one. It caught my eye, which is on number six, recommendation six, number five, encourage risk-taking among administrators by offering administrators multi-year contracts. I think this is like huge because I do feel like our administrators, they're sort of, it's, there's always on like on a yearly contract. And the idea is that if we really want to commit to do the work and also commit to some of the great ministers that we have or our great ministers, like they should be on multi-year contracts. Lastly, I'll just say that one of my thoughts is, is sort of like how we get there. And Superintendent Tosa talked about the next sixty days and coming back in June. I really see this report as like, you know, definitely identifying the issues that we have and, and some initial ways to sort of solve them. But I would love to see is next, take this and then have some sort of implementation plan. And so it's the next sixty days, something that we can approve, something where some of the concerns that we have of how we fit in the staff, how, how we make it work. I'd love to see a timeline. I know I mentioned timeline a lot, not just in the next year, but you look at it next year and maybe next three years, next five years to really see how this becomes not just sort of like something that we put on the shelf and that's checking the box, but something that really lives within our district. Not only that, I'd love to see the fiscal impacts of this, but not in terms of saying, oh, we've thrown X amount of money at this. But really to make sure that in year one, in year two, in year three, when we look at our multi-year budgets, they, we actually have sort of a line item that we are devoting, putting our money where our mouth is. So we actually say, this is what we are going to spend. And so that when our budget does take a turn, that we actually will still commit money to making this happen. So lastly, I, my mind jumped to, one of the parents was on the site council, I think at one of the schools. I figure like, you know, we have site councils that, you know, when we talk about how you make change, you think about champions and internal champions and you need a whole bunch of champions to make this work. We're talking about just internally on our staff and everything, but I also think about the PTA. And you think about, should we at some point in the future bring in champions at each of the schools? And we have a D-Lat Committee, we have a site council, you know, is there a wing of some PTAs that, you know, all of a sudden we have a DEI committee? That, you know, something where we can not only bind, so, so there's more buying, not just from the staff and the teachers, but from our community itself. And so those are all thoughts and these are next steps. But I'm really grateful that you guys have gone through this and spent the time. I'm very excited. And I, I hope to see what the next steps are, the plan, how we do it. And then, you know, hopefully when it all works out, you know, to actually approve something and how it weaves into everything that we're doing now. So thank you for everything you guys have done.
Thanks for your notes, Mr. Chen. I just want to highlight that I think this task force like is done. Like so for those next steps, we, I think we definitely want to work with you. We want to like, we like each other, we like hanging out each other. But just like, you know, having a plan of how to continue that work. Because I agree, we need to nail some details down. We need to figure out a timeline, a schedule, all those things. So just know that this task force, even though our work is done, we're with you, we're here to support. I'm not going away, I got a four-year-old, right? So I'm going to be here for a while. And I love the school site council, agree, it brings so much transparency for community members to understand what's, what's going on at the school. But I agree that it's dangerous to silo, so there is some potential of connecting those school site councils somehow. So we can look at it at a broader vision, but yes, we're here to support you all. So, so, yeah.
Well. I just want to say thank you to all of you for the hard work that you have put into this. It's amazing to see what has happened here. And my first question, clarifying question asked was regarding the amount of Tosa's who would be assigned to the schools, because to me, it appeared immediately that we need a lot more people assigned to doing this work. And I am excited about moving to the next steps and exploring the next phases to get this work implemented throughout the district and every department and with every staff. So thank you and looking forward to the work.
Any other board comments?
I'll just briefly say, you know, thank you for this presentation and thank you for the information. I think about like how, sorry, my emails aren't going to ding. I'm at work, sorry. So I just think about how, you know, students all learn differently and I think that I also learn differently. And so I'm not, like, I appreciate everything you've shared and I don't, I don't think I totally understand the, the magnitude of the work that's here and I know that it's huge. And so I look forward to learning more about this and seeing what the next steps are. I'm more of a kind of person that I do need to, I need to know specifics, I need to know the plan, I need to know how does it work? And, and, and I know that I'll get there, but I just, I really appreciate this, this first initial step. And I look forward to the next sixty days when we talk about what this looks like and, and we move forward. So appreciate everything you guys have done and all the work that you put into this.
Any other board comments to get that join me to say goodnight?
Think that's a sign. Anyways.
Thank you so much for letting us kind of download our intentions into thirty pages. I think it's really hard to capture like an equity blueprint for every single department, for every single school, for every single person in the district. Because we came into this with this recognition that we don't know everything, right? We're a group of thirty. Really, really smart, really hardworking, really passionate people. But we also didn't want to say, here are the five things that we recommend. Can we have it tomorrow? Because it is about creating a dialogue, right? It's about surfacing, some of, some of these things are a lot like philosophically based, right? They're not anything that needs to be implemented tomorrow. They're not, a lot of it is just awareness. And we didn't, we wanted to honor the voices of the thirty other, the thirty people on the task force. So that's why if, if the recommendations kind of seem, you know, here and there, it's because we didn't want to just say, we're just going to hear from Charlotte because she articulated really well. So we're going to have bullet point number one. We wanted to capture the perspectives of so many different types of individuals that come to the, to the task force. And going back, I'm, my favorite part of this is the greatest hopes and fears portion of the, of the document. I think vulnerability was really key in the whole process. And, and the, the task force was parent-heavy, right? We, we really, I really wanted to hear parents and learn from them. So I think that, that to me, that page really stands out because if you look at all the hopes, I mean, that's what this document is about. It's a document of hope. And we hope that you'll marinate and you'll read. I'm sure tonight, when you get home, you'll read this again, you know? And we hope that, that you'll think about sort of the who, which is again, that video. We uploaded it to this board agenda, anyone at home. Kids know what cultural responsive teaching learning is, right? So how do we make sure that what they define as those things are actual, actual reality, right? We have a responsibility so that some, to a student can read, so that a student can see themselves in the curriculum. So they're going to hold us accountable for the work. And we continue to be committed and I, I'm already tapping all the people on here and the people to be, to be on the Equity Task Force, to be, we have an EL Task Force coming up. So Charlotte, I'm going to hold you to that, it's recorded that you're coming back. So thank you so much. And I want to thank our, you know, our superintendent, again, he said it really well, that a lot of the work that we're doing, it's already in the plan. And we're just kind of like magnifying it and centering on equity. But it's, nothing in here should be a surprise. We did this already eleven months ago as a school district.
Thank you all again so much. And thank you, Nancy, for the, the closing thoughts there. Again, really, really appreciate it. I think as, as a board, we're deeply committed to this work and so grateful that we have so many incredible folks in place to implement it because, you know, I've said at so many meetings, like we can have all the best policies in the world, but if we don't have the best people on the ground implementing it, it doesn't matter, right? It just sits on a piece of paper somewhere. So really, really grateful to all of you.
Oh, my goodness.
Alrighty, anything else before we move to adjourn? For those of you that are like new to the district, like this used to be like every board meeting, I would have like babies on my lap. So this is like, they don't make, they don't make as many cameos anymore, but, and they're much bigger now. Alrighty, we will move on to adjournment.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Proctor for the motion and Trustee Chen for the second. Trustee Chen.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks.
Yes.
Trustee Chen.
Yes.
Trustee Proctor.
Yeah.
A yes for me as well. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.